Now, we're going to the folks, City Attorney, City Attorney, City Attorney, or Resident Mayor, City Council, when any of you serve in this conference, they can name the day that this was where I was.
My name is Frida Buzz. I'm the Executive Director for Jefferson Park Daycare Center. My address is at 485 Madison Avenue, Elizabeth New Church. Good evening, members of the Elizabeth City Council. I am the Executive Director of Jefferson Park Preschool Program. I am here tonight to represent the interests of the Jefferson Park Board of Trustees, the children and their families that are central to it, and also the employees who provide high-quality early childhood education, child and family services. Here with me tonight are the Jefferson Park Trustees, Alex Ozak, the President, Cynthia Campbell, the Vice President, and Chessie Roberts, Treasurer. I also have staff members, parents, as well as community representatives. I am sure that the members of this speaking body are well aware of the contributions which Jefferson Park Preschool Program has made to the Elizabeth community over the many years. As you know, Jefferson Park Daycare Center is a well-respected, final one C3 nonprofit organization, which has provided child and family services to the Jefferson Park community in Elizabeth for over forty years. The A2C Child and Program provides center-based, full-day, full-minute preschool program services to children and their families. Obviously, these services we provide are essential to many working-class families here in Elizabeth. Unfortunately, a dark shadow has descended upon this long-standing beacon of the community. As a point in fact, the city administration, the Duncan Line, have responded to our prior communications for assistance, and I thank you for that. But I want to thank Mayor Golding and the City Council, especially Councilmembers here, and Department of Defense, and thank you so very much for your past support. However, these are extremely demanding times for all our child and programs, even successive ones like ours, and we are constrained to seek your assistance once again. Without any hesitation, Jefferson Park is at risk of losing its programs because our families cannot meet the new imposed eligibility requirements for wraparound services by the state of New Jersey Department of Human Services. Wraparound service is a before- and after-care program established and is for our preschoolers and their families. The loss of our wraparound program brings two serious problems. First, the vast majority of our residential families have lost a viable childhood service which expands the basic six-hour program to ten hours, and obviously helps working parents, particularly those who travel a significant distance to their jobs. Second, the law that imposed wraparound revenues to Jefferson Park has created a tremendous financial loss. Wraparound income has been used as the managing funds required to meet our contract with the Department of Education. Without these managing funds, Jefferson Park experiences a shortfall of approximately fifty-five thousand dollars annually with our Department of Education contract. That is why we need your help.
You have, you have five, with many others, the finances to wrap around.
Okay, wraparound, the wraparound day, the wraparound funds are particularly beneficial as they are discretionary funds. Priority provision of these guidelines by DHS, Jefferson Park, was able to utilize these lines to pay our share of the indirect costs as required by DOD. Without these lines, too, we experience a budget shortfall which increases with each succeeding contract reset. We are in this moment, humbly request from the support of the City of Elizabeth through a meeting with the appropriate council committee for further in-depth discussion. With that, I'd like to ask the council's permission to hear other testimonies regarding this research. If that not being possible, we have brought along with us a petition and several letters as well. And with the president's permission, we'd like to hand it to our.
You have information, yes, that's a question. You might, you might, yeah?
Yes.
It's simple, thank you. Just wanted to hope that we admire all our people that are over there, and we hope that we, the assistant, we hope that we get, we get the funds, thank you. Anyone else, the City Council?
Good evening. Was there a, yes, say, good evening, Justice Jackson? I'm sorry, I was saying, a happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, also a happy Thanksgiving out there. First off, Mr. Jackson, I know, you know, we don't know each other, but I can tell you that we, whether a friend or foe, everyone has always had a side for you, so thanks as a, a congratulations on that. I also wanted to wish you a happy, long, and healthy retirement, and everything you do. And I guess another congratulations would go to the Elizabeth High School football team, which on Friday won the state championships in a very thrilling game, and I know it was raining out, and I'm glad, and the Board of Education was also providing school buses so that people in the community could come out to see the game and transfer those to the first stage. I also want to speak, I know we're losing, Mr. Jackson, in the city, my friend has been here for almost forty years now, and we have seen how it's, how it moves, and I know I've played an integral part of that. As an educator myself, I know how important schools are for the future of any city in the state and the country, and it sounds to me to know and to really find out that a few individuals in the last month have found people helping students or actually allowing students or making students really achieve. I guess there was, there was a cheating scandal in school twenty, and I was just appalled because I know the children here in, in our city already have many obstacles that they have to overcome, and have to achieve more, and maybe another issue, and it just appalled me to see that some individuals will teach our students, achieving is acceptable and also cultural. So I know we're losing, you know, a great educator, a great legislator, and it's just, it's something that's, and I hope that, you know, whoever comes, and I know Councilman Roval will be the Councilman in large, but when we get another council person, I hope that they can follow you for us and improve the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for record.
Sure. I am a teacher at the University of Atlanta, representing here, Oldie and Lee, and one of the designers of Jefferson Park. As you have heard, we want to be sweet about us for Oldie, of course, and she has been, she has done for our community and for our school in order to keep them alive. I just wanted to, from inside, I came, and I learned my master degree, I came, and I actually, six years, I'm a teacher there. One thing about Jefferson Park is just the family. My assistant is that, she's been working there for twenty-two years. Right now, we have students that are coming back, why they are coming back because of the excellence that they're providing here education. We've been very sad, and we have started to hear that our program is in jeopardy. And one thing, one word that could help me define the program is caring. We are not just educators at Jefferson Park, we provide control, we have children who are, we identify the family's needs, we are, we have the social workers, we are the family workers, we are the educational consultant, and we ourselves as a family, we are there to identify a lot of needs, whether it is, you know, educational services, whether it is financial burdens, we are always sensitive to their needs. We have children who are becoming with infections and cannot hear us and not talk to us, we are there to provide a lot of services. We came here not for your support because we think that we really need change a lot of lives, we need a difference, we are not just educators, but we have generations that are coming back because of our education and the hard work that has been behind all this year. Thank you so much for listening and taking into consideration our education. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all your efforts.
May you have a very.
This is George Girard, this is Councilman Roval, Elizabeth, or first, I don't know where I go. As to Councilman Jackson, the name of Ed Jackson, Elizabeth, I guess, and I thank you for your service, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council President, and Mr. Council. My name is Theodore Stevens, and I am a visitor from the county to the northeast of Gilbert Park, Essex County, and I just completed my first year as Essex County Servant, and so since I'm a fan of the government, then I wanted to, on business opportunity, to wish you all, first of all, a very happy holiday season, and to say hello to my good friends, Councilman Keenan and Councilwoman Patricia Purkins Dusty, who I had hundreds of years ago standing by my good friend Judge Marshals for her end of these chambers. Everybody come into these chambers, I've become more a fan of Elizabeth. I'm a fan of the government, and I think that Elizabeth is blessed to have the government from the mayor down to the council all the way through, so you're to be commended for all of your actions. I don't know, Councilman Jackson, I had that opportunity, but from anyone who heard the applause given to you this evening, anybody know that you are also, have been significantly picked here, and I congratulate you on very hard, and wish you the best in the future. My second purpose being here is this, I, I'm a firm volunteer in legal services, and I am a counsel for Jefferson Park, and again, I offer my legal services for them, and I just wanted to just point out one thing, as you all know, we just finished a very important election for the president, and President Barack Obama highlighted, highlighted through his campaign, the quantities that we have, we need to spend money in a difficult economy, but to make the proper investments that we need to make to make sure that we remain the number one country which we always have been and seek to always be. And I just would like to remind everyone in this season, if there's no greater investment, we need to make it in our children, and that's what Jefferson Park, and the brief time I am working with it, has been a beacon of hope in this community for over forty years, and so I hope that this council hears, and I know that you hear their concerns, and I hope that you will give them whatever deliberation you can and assist it, everyone. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Beverly Baker, I live at 485 Cameron Street, I work for Jefferson Park at 485 Madison Avenue, I've been there for twenty-two years, my family is a part of Jefferson Park Daycare Center, my sister, she worked there fourteen years, my mom worked there twelve years, I have two children, one is thirty-three and one is twenty-six, both graduated from kindergarten from Jefferson Park Daycare Center. I also look, Jefferson Park is in my community where I live, it's been doing a great job, and we would like for you to help us to fund this, keep it open. Thank you so much.
If I may just say a word regarding Jefferson Park Preschool Program, if I may.
What can you?
I can only, if that's your wish.
Yeah, if you have that different intention, you know.
Oh, okay, I thought they were gonna do so much.
Anyone else who wants to speak?
I have to tell you, can we, you want to quieten? Two thirty, walk over, walk to the jet. I just like to take this time to thank our Councilman, Councilman Roval, I know, I told you a couple weeks ago when you promised me that there will be a change of the local class, and there is. That night I left here, at ten o'clock at night, they were doing the floors in my living room. The next day, they painted the hallways, they painted the stairwells, everything in the hallway is all fixed up now, and they had to change the front door, they took it off, and they haven't put a new one on yet, but I'm glad that you got the time and finally got to run the ball to do what they're supposed to be doing, and I know a lot that has to do tomorrow because HUD is coming to investigate tomorrow, and a lot of things that need to be done, they got on. So I really appreciate you because I know you promised me you would send out a letter and you would get on their case, and I know you did, and I appreciate it very much, and I want to thank you all for staffing, and Councilman Jackson, I wish you a very happy retirement, enjoy it, and I wish everybody a good holiday.
Thank you. We work as a team here, and we work together very closely, although either one of us might have stated to send out a letter, but we're doing it as a team, and we certainly hope that will continue through next cycle.
Good evening, Council, my name is Curtis Smith, I'm a seventh-year plan, right here in the local city of Elizabeth. I came to help this house, my house will be under the best, I still have another new star, but I share some time, as to my also parts of my attention, our wonderful husband first is my, have a task for MS, I spoke to Pepperdust, I came to that, she's a partner, I'm from Elizabeth, I'm a liberal, I was at my high school, she, she showed me to him, but that hurt a trial, so her kindness, her wisdom, I decided to go for it. I knew as a child, I was three years old, I was in high school, three years, and in high school, I said, I am a social worker, against my immediate school's price social worker, I am a task worker, I always did that, June, January, I was at first meeting tomorrow morning, because this woman had her best, she showed me I had, can, and will do something at MS, so I promised on my, my husband, I promised I'm from Elizabeth, I used to remember twice, years ago, where are you from? I said, from Elizabeth, Elizabeth, that's a dirty town, I said, no, it's not, I'm from Elizabeth, so I'm like, dirty, go right to Elizabeth, I'm very nice, I'm from Elizabeth church, I admit, I know myself, I am, I am from Jefferson, I am proud of my mind, always lived with church school, and Councilman Jackson, I went to eighth grade, you were my gym teacher. I was, I was, I was, I was in the gym, always in the gym, by the age of eighth grade, I was at a band, so I admit, I'll do my best, be a commissioner, improve Elizabeth's world in town, and Elizabeth's one more time, I will pray for these people, that's all I said. Oh, one thing, which person, who I miss you, excuse me, sir. I, 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 I,[1376.12]
So you were so minimal in all of that, and I thank you, and I congratulate you, and I wish you the best of years from back in the day.
My name is Chessie Roberts, and I was born in Elizabeth, and I am now eighty-six years old. And I have never been prouder than I am at this moment to say congratulations to one of my former students, Mr. Jacobs. I am so proud of you, and you have certainly made the Elizabeth Board of Education a good work for the city. Now, Herschel. He's known as Mr. Cleaney, as Steve says in the center. I don't believe he's retired.
No, he's not.
I just don't believe he's retired. Out of that, what I have decided you do, you are a best here. You have been a marvelous, marvelous example with excellent work at work at this. And we are so proud, so proud that you are a part of the family. Now, for the illustrious council persons, I certainly hope you listen carefully to what the CEO of Jefferson Park Daycare Center said. She is one of the most efficient persons I have met for many and many years. She knows exactly what she's doing. She has compassion for all of the staff, as well as the students. Our students perform on the highest level, and that is no trick today. I know most of the council people here, and this is Golden. You are my council person, in whom I am well pleased. And I know of your efficiency and your compassion and your concern for the advancement of your city. So I have no doubt that you're going to do the right thing. And the positive thing for Jefferson Park Daycare Center, thank you, and have a good rest.
It's a little bit strange, I guess, Roberts, but she comes from this list, and when Chessie... When Chessie's reading, you have to listen. And we listen. Anyone else like a rest in the council, any concerned? Once again, anyone else like a rest in the council, any concerned? Saying, I'm going to close the door, but allow Councilwoman, rest in which you make her remarks about Jefferson Park.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be extremely brief. Mr. President, I just want to say that in the executive director's remarks, Ms. Buzz mentioned that she wanted some type of committee or some type of study to be formed of the council. And I just wanted to go on record to say that I would like to be a part of that committee to see how we can enhance and keep Jefferson Park Preschool Program alive, viable, and functioning in our city. My grandmother passed away in May of this year. She was ninety-two years old, and she worked at Jefferson Park Preschool Program. She was affectionately known as Miss Ellen. And just in her memory and the love that she had for children and the Jefferson Park Preschool Program, I am required to make sure that this organization is well and it is functioning to the level in which it needs to be functioning too. And prayerfully, with all of us working together, we will find the funds to do what is necessary. So I just wanted to go on record to say that I would be, I would like to make myself available to be a part of that committee, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. Yeah, Council, Kim.
I agree, I would also like to be part of that committee. And I would also specifically say that if we can direct the director of policy plan, Bill Reyes, to perhaps communicate with the county to see if there's anything that can be done on the eligibility requirements for the parents. Maybe, I don't know whether there's any possibility of doing that, but it's something that needs to be pursued, and at least have the city and county advising Trenton that they're cutting, they're cutting parents out, they're cutting children out. Maybe there's some resolution to that piece as well. But this is, Jefferson Park Daycare is an institution, we've been here many, many years. I won't tell you how many, this is all about. But we need more daycare centers like this, not less. And none of them in the city of Elizabeth should be threatened by lack of funding, so let's see what we can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. I look forward to making a possible, I want to make a committee also, and... We can add to some of the same thing I was trying to think about. We need to see if we can address the policy plan also, we need to stay in Elizabeth also. We need to reach out to the county and make sure that they will, so. So if you, Jefferson Park, just give us a little time, and we'll see what we can come up with, okay?
Thank you.